I think for now, Mike, maybe we ought to just do your first line of $2,000 line, and then maybe in the future, we can put back for an informational sign.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna make a motion, but if he has the money to go ahead and get the sign?
I don't have it.
Well, I don't know whether he has the money, and he's been transferring money for his electoracy and his other utilities that we didn't bank on. I think if he could go, if you would give him permission to go to the commissioners, commissioners of council on this fifteen, to use that extra money that was in the number of our vote to purchase buildings, because this is a building expense. I don't know whether they will accept that or not, but it is.
It'll need to be marked so everybody knows what it is. I make, that's in my motion. We'll give him permission to go into council, whether to purchase this sign.
All right, I forgot my motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Uh, next thing, the NISCO grant that I submitted for, for the active threat training was awarded, so I'll be, I've already got the, uh, the guy that's gonna be doing the training locked on for the active threat training, and I'm just gonna work the dates with him. Those will be coming up towards the end of the month, probably first part of October. They're gonna do it in a couple sessions, and they'll find a couple sessions before I. And then, what's not on the agenda, uh, just because grants came out real late, the emergency EMPG salary reimbursement that we get every year from me came out. I'm sure you're gonna say, go ahead and submit for the reimbursement of $19,000.
You don't.
Okay. And then, the competitive grant came out as well, which is capped at $20,000. It's a reimbursable grant, just like the other one that I submitted for earlier this year. I'm gonna look at getting security cameras and switching the locks over to electronic locks on that building. And that's a reimbursable grant, which should just be, we may try and then get reimbursed for that.
All right. Are you gonna use your camera guy here in the courthouse to do it?
I'm looking, I will look at him. Uh, he doesn't get back till the 12th, and I got till the end of the month to get this grant in, but I've got two other vendors coming this week to bring me quotes, but I'll look at him as well.
I need to talk to you about the $20,000, the one played canceled, so I have to meet with him to talk to you.
Yep. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for having us.
Lots to think about.
Good morning, Jeff.
Morning. Just wanted to give a quick update on a couple things. First, we had a road closure request update. We met with the E&amp;A Director, the Rock Creek Fire Chief, Assistant Burris Fire Chief, Rock Creek Township Trustee, Liberty Township Trustee, and myself, uh, on the 19th. And consensus there was, they'd rather not close either of the crossings, because what one's being worked on, there's still another crossing that they can get across. And if one was to be closed, they prefer that the Rockfield Oak Street crossing be closed and kept Walnut Street open in Rockfield, because of the curves approaching the crossing itself. So, I also reached out to Norfolk Southern and, um, gave them the comment about the concern of closing one crossing and not being able to get across the tracks to the service of their people. And they mentioned that there's ways of working with communities to either close half the crossing at a time while they're working, if there's only one crossing, in order to keep service on the cross. So, that, that is a possibility. We have to get that right, and from them I would be.
Well, the phone calls I've got about this, um, I'm not in favor of closing any. The people came to me and said, hey, we don't want to close for the reasons you just said, and, you know, sometimes the train will stop in Rockfield and just close one and not the other, so they can still get around. So, I'm not in favor.
Yeah, but if they only have one crossing.
Right. They can have nobody else. So, like I always said before, I am the people's word, and people spoke to me, so I am in favor of not closing any of them at all.
Well, my recommendation would be to have further discussion of the whole issue in Norfolk Southern. I would suggest not making a decision today.
That's fine. I'm a speaker. I don't, I don't like to put it wherever it goes.
You may well get it back.
No, you never get it back. Once they're gone, they're gone.
That's the way she's put her eyes.
Never know, there might be a development there, and might need that crossing later.
Could be. Maybe 20 years, maybe 40 years.
So, for all the consensus of not closing any, if we might have those, whether the motions are killed, they, they're all marked. They don't want to throw the crossing. Most of the boroughs is not having to have a crossing. But they're all marked, so I think the same reason, you don't get that out. I'm gonna make a motion not to close any crossings.
Got a motion in a second, not to close any crossings. All in. Any comment from out here? Anybody want them closed? I call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to not close any crossings, say aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, just wanted to give you an update on our paving and chip and seal program. The paving is being done by at least Riley. They're approximately at 74% complete right now. They're finishing up 100 north today. Uh, they're working on the last two miles, and then they'll move up to 700 west.
Let me just say, we all fire call agree.
And then, our chip and seal program, we're about at 71% complete right now. We're looking at delaying the kind of 800 south portion, because there's so much traffic when there's trying, it's hard to keep it in decent enough shape in order to put the chip and seal on it, so.
Is that because of the?
That's because of the detour, yeah.
Figured that was gonna happen.
We're hoping to be able to keep up with it, but we can't.
I'm gonna say, I've got some calls saying that, you know, it's getting torped pretty bad. And it's going to chip and seal on it, and she's got tired of it.
It will, so we'll, we'll keep, keep it maintained as far as.
Well, maybe we do it, and they tear it up, maybe it'll stay, we'll just come in and pay it.
Well, yeah, we'll keep track of what we're already putting out there, so we'll be good. And then, I, we'll be putting out a striping program, uh, to stripe some of the roads that we've already paved this year, and the ones last year that were, weren't yet to be done. So, uh, if you have a list of any that you'd like to include, let me know, and I'll, I'll include those.
Covered Bridge.
The Covered Bridge, uh, right now is... You were talking about Lancaster?
No.
Oh. Yeah, that one is on our striding list, our striding program, to have that.
That one's there.
Yeah. Yeah, I have those on. Lancaster, uh, we had some issues structurally, so right now it is closed.
Really? Something during a cross, you had it, you seen it on Facebook.
How bad? It's completely closed, we'll all be tearing off all the decking and replacing some of the, all of these.
The ladies are okay.
You know, some of the lorries are getting cracked.
I was told the semi was gonna try to go through, but it didn't fit, so he backed out. We need to put up signs that says new semis at all on these roads. We have to actually take them.
There's been a new program from INDOT requiring emergency vehicle signs, and that's what's been put up, and I think that's creating more confusion than just the single sign we had before. I'm talking to our bridge inspectors, see what, what sign we can, if we can just make it a single sign.
Ed, can we put up signs that said, "Semis over such amount gets a $5,000, $6,000 fine"?
We have something on books, maybe, uh, in, in the county code, I'll pick and look.
I know during harvest and planting season, we, our farmers use trucks, but the commercial trucks is the ones that are tearing these roads up right now, because they're wanting to go around and make it easier on themselves.
I need to revisit that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Last time I asked you about the signs on the private road, if you go back up again, you took down?
Uh, I saw one sign, uh, really.
One sign what?
Off of, uh, 950 north. Yet, there is a private road sign that's sort of hidden, it's covered by brush, so I'll get that. But is there another sign besides the street name sign itself?
Yeah, whatever.
No, since we took it down.
Yeah, we took it down. Our sign, I took it down. The sign is out there. I've got two ladies who live down that road there, it's just after me, something awful.
Yeah, I could put the street name sign back up, they're on a different location, so it's not covered. Uh, whether there's another sign or not, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think there was one that said something about no, no, uh, no head in, or no, no outlet, no.
Okay.
I'll, I'll find out.
Okay.
What they want. And I was gonna talk to you about 300 north, and, uh, we had a gentleman talk to me for quite a while about, that there's a lot of trees, bushes like that that are encroaching on the road, to the point that if you need another car, you're getting into the bush three yards north. He's also concerned about.
You know, whereabouts something a bit more.
He's on the, on the Delphi side of Wilson Bridge. And, uh.
Pretty hairy, isn't it?
Yeah. He was also concerned about, uh, people putting blocks out for.
In the right way.
Or, yeah, in the right way.
If it's in the right way, we can get a move.
There are some. I go down through it, look, and they've done it for the core, they've done it for protection and something, but they are right in the right way, so.
Shouldn't use right lines.
Did you drive it from there? Take a look.
Did you ever find one of the trees in Pittsburgh?
Yeah, the tree in Pittsburgh's been taken down.
It has been taken down.
And there's one in color that's been taken down. Okay. And I've got two more.
They bounce a body, they have the blood, right? That crane that got up?
Uh, just a big bugger truck. And then, our crew worked with it, and we did all the brush up.
Good note, though, I've had a lot of compliments on the chip and seal.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of people very happy with the progress on where, how good I am with that. Thank you.
All right.
And we are ready for Cameron. Morning, Cameron.
Good morning.
Hey, 10 o'clock, look at this.
It's gonna be the quickest presentation of the morning.
I don't know, Mike went pretty quick.
I apologize, and Matt's back to sit down on that, it's not cooperating this morning, so. Real quick, uh, area plan meeting last month, we had, uh, on the screen here, Maxwell Greenwood Farms. They approached us for a petition to rezonate, uh, the neighborhood property there at Seagulls, we got a promoter with Seagull Cori.
Where are we out there, would be pointed out in the form.
Yep, so where you see the, the pond right there, that's Seagull's gravel, on 250 north. Just to the left of that, the property that's highlighted, that's 80 acres, on by the Maxwells, you got, uh, there are, you got Seagulls in here, and so are the Maxwells. The petition was to rezonate to Industrial, uh, which was passed by the APC Board.
Troy Avenue, is it? How's the addition? Who?
Troy Avenue. Troy Avenue, it's down at the bottom of 250. That valley. If you turn left off of 421 in Pittsburgh, instead of going right, that winds around back to 250 north there, and goes up to the gravel.
Right.
Seagull, well, it used to be Ryder's. Ryder's concrete, Ryder's, yep. So, that's the quarry there in the picture, which is already zoned I-2 Industrial. Uh, I believe the, the purpose of this is for future expansion. Uh, we didn't have anybody, uh, call and complain, we had one person show up to the meeting, said he had no issues with it. I spoke to a few people that live in the general area, I used to live in the area. You never hear any, it's not like the stone quarry whatsoever, there's no blasting, so it's a pretty quiet operation, didn't get any complaints, uh, and obviously, the point is for future expansion. So, uh, Tim Seagull's here with me this morning, so is the Maxwells, if you guys have any questions from them. Again, the petition was rezoned from Ag to I-2 Industrial.
You guys, so it's favorable?
Correct, and you should have that sheet in front of you.
What is it now?
Ag.
Ag.
Yep, same acres, Ag.
And you're wanting to change it to?
I-2, which is conforming with what the current Seagulls is, with I-2, that's what it needs to be to be, uh, quarry. For him to be able to expand, it has to be I-2, so again, the Maxwells are here, along with Tim Seagull, if you have any questions, so.
I make motion to defer.
You should, uh, entertain public comment, because it's a, it's actually a hearing or a proposed ordinance to amend the zoning.
No, this is a rezonate.
It's a rezonate.
This is a rezonate. This is a petition rezonate.
Right. It's, it's a rezoning, it's changing the map.
Correct.
Right. They need to entertain public comment.
That's what I was saying, we know.
Sure.
I never read it on the last one.
It's a good idea to do it. Is there any public comment to this?
Sure.
Anyone wants to comment on this? Rezoning from Ag to I-2. Anytime we could have public comment is good.
Sure.
I can have fun. Thank you. Do you want? Steve, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
I still say it.
Yes, sir. Let us wait for the public comment.
That's something I guess we're not starting, I guess we're gonna have to.
It, it should.
Yeah. Who said we haven't?
Yeah, that, we do, we open up public.
I can say you guys have a saying you're reading up.
What's our office?
Obviously, that's been over a month.
Right now, that office won't there.
Well, if, if I don't ever ask for public comment, which I should, you all should know that you're welcome to comment, and we'll take your comments on your opinions and all that on everything, so. If I don't do my job right and say, it's time, go ahead and put your hand up and speak out.
And all these have to be in the paper, they have to be, there has to be a sign posting, there's letters that go out to the properties, so, like I said, one person showed up to the meeting, he lives right in the general area, and he said, it sounds like a good idea. So, there was no opposition to this particular petition, so. And Seagulls, if you guys know where that's, they do a good job out there, they help clean the road up. I lived out there in 2013, and without Tim Seagull, we wouldn't have got to work, because he brought the loader down, so he's good for that general area, he does a good job helping anybody he can as well, so.
So, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a second. Last tip for comment. A call for a vote. All in favor of changing this from Ag to I-2, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alan. Uh, real quick, another item that we passed last month was the, I've sent this to you guys in previous months, it's been quite a process, I think it's a little over a year and a half, maybe longer. Adding the mixed-use zoning to the area plan, uh, the Carroll County zoning ordinance, the purpose of this, uh, was we have several, several homes that are located within the business districts of each entity, such as Camden Burlington, not so much of Yeoman, Delphi had a few, that in order for those homes to sell, banks will not give the financing if it's own business. They just, they make them go through the process to get the rezoned. In the seventies, when it was own business, the, the business never showed up, so they just built a house, which is common, it's not something, it's just Carroll County. Uh, working with GRW and Deb Lozier, they come up with an M-U zoning, which basically it's a mixed-use for residential, as well as, uh, business, and we passed that particular ordinance in last month's meeting, to the point where now we can present to each community, um, they all have their own copy now, they have 90 days to approve or not approve, it's certainly up to them. I know Camden Burlington are both on board, because they've had this issue pop up a few times, um, so Delphi, I'm not sure, we're, uh, you know, they're working through some things right now with, uh, different committees and things such as that, so if Delphi chooses to do it, that's their option as well, Yeoman can do it, but again, they have 90 days, uh, from the time that they are delivered the ordinance, so you guys have a Friday as well, so you guys also have 90 days. So, if you guys choose to adopt it to the Carroll County ordinance, or if you choose not to, it's a decision you have to make today, but I do have Deb Lozier here today this morning to answer any questions, if you have any, and that's.
Are you, uh, it's our part would be Rockville Burrows, Cocker, Pittsburgh.
Which, yeah, which are not incorporated towns.
Not incorporated.
Correct.
So, have you taken a look at those communities to see if there are homes in what's designated as business, business districts in each of those villages?
Not particularly the, the smaller towns, because at this point, with trying to figure out the incorporated towns, there's several. Camden has a bunch, Burlington has a bunch, uh, that's something I can do, I go out to East Community, Cocker, Rockville Burrows each Tuesday, so.
However, those towns have a.
I would say, yeah.
Division somewhere.
Sure, it's usually right along Main Street. Uh, there's a few that's spot zone, that's, that's not something we like to do, it's done in the past, and of course, the property owners don't know it's even its own business. So, it's more for the main line, the, the main street, of what didn't happen in the seventies, another home there, but I can drive to Camden and get the ones, you know, take a peek at the ones in the smaller communities that's not within the incorporated areas by all these. Again, this is, they're 90 days, and Deb is here, uh, from GRW, she's been fantastic throughout this process. COVID slowed everything down, so this has been a long, long process, and I know the communities are happy for it, because it saves a lot of headaches, when it gets to that point of selling a home, then, you know, towns such as Burlington, so. If you guys have questions, she is in the audience. I'd be happy to drive the, you know, smaller communities that we have, Rockville Burrows. I don't know, we did actually want a 19 for Rockville, remember, right there? Used to be a window. Yep, so that, that's perfect answer right there, so. Yep. You guys have any questions for Deb?
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Hi, of course, 100% adjusted, did you read, make sure the commissioner read all of it, uses permitted, and uses is gonna take special exception to get, you're adding a layer of bureaucracy to the situation out there. Make sure you read the thing very closely, understand what it is, I don't think it's, what he says is correct, needs to be corrected, but you didn't need to add all the bureaucracy on the end of it, the whole page of restrictions, I'm saying, you got many small business, but I have to jump through two more hoops now to get where they're at. And make sure.
Do you make it to a business, or make it to a residential?
Read the restriction on the back, that one that takes special exception to get.
Yeah, so each district has use of permitted as special exceptions, that's, that's common in each district, so.
You gotta page it, page what's okay, and you gotta page everything you're gonna have to add, if you can do it. Make sure you're reading, make sure you understand what this is gonna change, I think it's gonna be a lot more changes once you're understanding, and when it starts to surf, I have to. The problem we've got is, we have changed the code for 35, 40 years in the county, everybody interprets it different, I can tell you what, what the code was like in 73, we're still using the same paperwork, same thing, but the new people have interpreted different, it's all changed. And I think this is gonna open up the can of worms of what changes is gonna happen, you don't want to change.
So, to touch on that, um, this has been sent to the board for several months, I never heard anything back from the board, any changes? So, during our meeting, I got accused of publicly chastising Mr. Watson, which I did not. There was a little bit of disagreement, because I did send it out to the board, didn't hear anything back, didn't hear any changes, so we went on with it, so there was fair amount of time given to, if this was an issue, we should have got it addressed, but I never heard anything back. So, do I disagree with Jeff? No. I mean, there, every time you change something, you know, it's changed, a lot of people don't like change, we had to look into the future, this was what was written by GRW, at that time, that's where we could have said, yeah, it doesn't fit our community, I didn't hear anything back, so, anyway, you have 90 days to prove it or not for this, so certainly, I do agree with them, look it over. It's not something Carroll County wants to do, that's your option, but, you know, each entity can do as they choose.
Yeah, I was just gonna note that this is just a new zoning district being added to the ordinance, it is not being put on the maps unless either a property owner wants it, or the towns, or the county wants to add it to their map. So, if at the time, there's a rezoning to add it to the map, and we have some issues with any of the uses, you can add that as a commitment during that process to tailor it to each custom situation. So, just know, we're not telling anybody they have to comply with this until it goes onto a map. And then, as far as the development standards, it only applies to new development, um, so if there's a vacant lot somewhere, they would have to comply with these standards, or, again, when you go through the rezoning process, you can kind of set conditions and commitments accordingly. Um, if a property should get rezoned to this, you know, that residential home, so they don't have to jump through extra hoops and waste time at a refinancing or a sale, um, and the property burns down for some reason, it's considered a non-conformal use, so they can totally rebuild it without having to go through any processes. We already recognize that this is our existing conditions, and we want to preserve those where we can, and hopefully, this new district will do that.
That's a question we get a lot from banks, if this house burns down, what can they do? So, and they go, but right now, currently, if there's a residential structure on business lot, they, they can't do anything, it's a sound zone for residential. So, that's the purpose with this, the main purpose was, that there's a dwelling there now, so if it burns down, those people basically, they have to go to the right of life, or they can go through the process of rezoning, which, you know, can be, it goes in front of our board, uh, it goes in front of a, you know, a city council, so there's a process here, that was the purpose, to, you already have that in place, where they didn't have to do that. If it burns down, it's damaged over 60%, you know, this will kick in, and of course, they can build. It was, it was for the community, we didn't do this to get anybody's, we're not trying to be, uh, more rules, more laws, this was an issue that's been in front of our board several times, and we presented a few of you, so the, the purpose of this was to help. So, speak with each community several times, go into the readings, they were all for it, because of the headaches that it would save. Is there some things that need to be tweaked? I didn't hear anything, so. Just move forward, and that's in the hands of each, each body for a 90-day review, so.
So, I'm sure we'll get a copy of this, and we'll read it all.
You can have that right there, or I can make another copy. You guys have, you've had it for some time.
We didn't, we didn't get the amendments, there wasn't.
The ordinance.
We got the ordinance, but not the amendments, like, like what he's talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's, nothing's changed on since the day you sent it to me. So, the, the amendments are basically the, what were, what were the new zone, so that's, you guys have that last year, so I'll get you guys each a copy in your mailbox if you want, but it is.
That's the text that would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Right, what he's got, we did not receive that.
They all have it via E&amp;As.
So, we will have mixed use this passage?
Correct. I talked to Steve about it, I think the day after I sent it to him. Yeah. Back in 2021, 2020, so. Again, if you got questions throughout the, the process, we got 90 days, by all means, give it to me, if I don't have an answer, I'll give it to Deb, or send these, but it's not something we're just trying to shove through, that's not it, the purpose was to help communities such as Burlington and Camden, so feel free to reach out, and I'll get you each a paper copy if you wish, but in my box, if I think I can. And I'll get you each a paper copy if you wish, but I'll box it, I think I did several months ago, so.
I, I, I think I want to look at some of the maps to see where this is. Particularly understanding Cutler, Pittsburgh.
Sure, yeah.
Camden and O'Fane, the site itself.
Cutler used the same thing, that main, main way in the town used to be several different stores that were businesses, so. And I can print those off for you too, each community, so.
There are areas there that in my memory were business and now are residential, so.
Yep.
Would this be the time to make sure that they get into that next meeting?
Absolutely. That's the only town, yeah. So we're basically monitoring, we're not trying to hurt mobile, we're just trying to go through and make it easier for the community. We're trying to make it easier that if that business or that home burnt or something happens to it or they don't have to go through the process of rezoning, it's already in the language that it can be either or. So it's, it's not a situation, we're trying to get peoples, or we're not trying to add bureaucracy, we're trying to make it easier. And this is an issue in a lot of counties, it's not just Carroll County, so. And in each end, you can pick what lots they want, like Deb said, it's not, we don't go tell them, you're going to do this, this lot. They pick what they want and then they present it to us, so it's not what we want, it's what each community wants, so. Okay?
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Alan, this is different, I'm not in a little, you need to get that paperwork about that land by, by income, in that corner?
He has the application, he hasn't got it back to me. I told him I'd walk him through it. There's a lot of, a lot of language on him and I told him I'd get it through, so. Yep.
People just leaving, remember, they have, I'm sorry, they didn't comment, I didn't know if they had a. That was your rezon?
That was, that was, that was all of them, that was Tim and Max, so that was the ones that were there, so.
Do you want this resolution or ordinance on the next meeting? Do you want the, that ordinance to be put on the next meeting or are you going to decide?
Yeah.
If you guys need anything between, feel free to give it to me and I'll try to, I'll clean it up.
We definitely want more government, but we want to make it easier. I don't see if that, I don't like being wrong here. Okay, we're ready for Mayor Worthing and Joe Hanger.
We went twenty minutes behind the hit now?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, thank you. So we, we were here at the previous commissioners' meeting talking about our desire to expand the Delphi commercial TIF to northeast near the Anderson. And at that time, you, you wanted more time to, to study it. And so we said that we would be on the agenda for this morning. And so we have a map that, that, that can display of the, of the areas that we would like to expand the commercial TIF into. And it's a mix of city parcels and county.
Part of it is city parcel.
Right, these are just, the city parcels run from the, the south, we have that map.
Tim, you been through this, right? It's all in one.
Yeah, so I have copies of the resolution that the Delphi redevelopment commission originally passed, which exhibits A and B for your resolution. And then we have, have the resolution for you to sign if you were to go to approve it today. We have the document and, and I changed the date to September.
I did that this morning, so I forgot it.
So, so we have potential development already interested in this area and we're just trying to give us the tools to, to help that go forward.
Like I said before, with my biggest concern is people calling me, they didn't want to have to pay for this on their water bill later. And that's a guarantee that it's not going to happen, right?
So if anything, it will reduce water bills because it has more customers who will be using water, so.
What about the worst case scenario, we turn this over and we call them, they don't come?
Well, we won't build it, that's where I'm concerned.
Yeah, so they're going to, the chicken and the egg, right, they got to come first, what we're going to build it, so those documents would already.
Then Jake, you're okay with us giving up the county portion of it?
I think from our position, having the TIF available to finance if we have a project is going to make the process just really quickly, move more quickly. So yes, I, I think our ability to finance infrastructure for a deal immediately instead of going through the process when the deal's already here or it may never come, that would be helpful, yes.
How timed sensitive is it right now?
So a lot of communities are leveraging the TIF resolution as an incentive to get them on the ground. So if there isn't TIF available, a lot of times they won't even, they, that's their first question, is, is there financing available for the infrastructure? And if the answer is no, they, they, a lot of times they move on. So, yeah, this helps, speed has been the number one key to getting a project done. We've already, I mean, we frankly, transparently, we've lost projects because we couldn't get a, a building fast enough. So this infrastructure piece for a, a transitional use is important and for us to continue to bridge the asset.
And when you say infrastructure, you're talking about water, sewer, roads, possibly sidewalks, things of that type, right?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the, yes, the answer is yes.
Not actual building.
Correct.
And there are, as you know, the property up there has changed downs. These are the, recently, and I think it was also a rezon to, up there that was approved by you.
Very different reason.
Right, and we have a group that meets monthly to discuss development in this area and there are developers at the table, so this, moving this forward does give us the, the tools then when, you know, they say, we'll go to be able to.
So like somebody comes in and says, hey, I'm going to put this here, but I don't want to wait ninety days for you guys to decide if you're going to put this. Who's going to put it in?
Yeah, who's paying for it, right? So, so they would be, yeah, we would be, as with all TIF, we're leveraging those future, those future tax dollars they're paying in order to bond that infrastructure. So yes, this, this does make development a lot smoother.
Okay, now, I have one little glitch and that is that I wanted to bring this before the Carroll County redevelopment and find out why we would do it with Delphi and not with them. To change the meeting day tonight, I had my email and stuff on the time of the meeting, so I could not be there for it. Just, I'm going to ask you two, is there, is there a reason why that we should do it with Delphi and not with our own Carroll County redevelopment?
Well, so this area, right, you're, you're, you don't have a TIF in this area.
No.
Right, so you have, so you have, we've already done the legislative process to try to extend the Delphi TIF to that area. So if you, if you don't, if you decide that the county needs to do it, then, then we now delay another year. A year.
A year?
Year, we, we, we started this at the beginning of the year and our deadline internally is December thirty-first, right, to get this completed, you, you haven't started the process, so now you're December thirty-first of twenty-three. The development people are standing here waiting for, for it to start and so, and we have the resources. The Delphi has the resources near there already. We have the water and the sewer already, we just extend into the area that is required. You, you, your legislative process would require you to come to the city and get a similar agreement to this in reverse, right? But that would be sometime next year. And so as, as Jake has been saying, it seems, and he may be speaking for.
Yeah, I think.
The county redevelopment commission.
I think, speaking with the county redevelopment, they, it is the city's infrastructure and them having redevelopment control over their own infrastructure. I think there's an advantage for the community to be able to have that. I would be afraid that the county redevelopment commission is somewhat removed from infrastructure decisions on the city level. And so this does streamline and make it easier for the city of Delphi to make decisions on their own infrastructure expansion with their own redevelopment commission appointments, so.
Does it make a difference, the considerable difference between the amount of money that the county redevelopment has and the amount you have in redevelopment, does that make a difference on when this is sold, do we get it actually done in the ground?
No, it would still come down to, you know, bonding capacity and the projects that would be going in, the developments. And the increased assessed value would be what the calculations were to repay the bonds would be based on. So, and, you know, judging from the projects that are under consideration, you know, that, that would not be an issue in terms of the finance of the TIF bonds based on development.
Will you do the bonds prior to the company making a commitment or the company making a commitment?
We'll do the bonds when we know what the project costs are and that will be when there are, when there is development that is already, you know, determined and the values and costs are determined.
Your last one, your biggest concern is, so if Delphi are going to have to pay for this, but they're saying, there goes, make sure that it catches before they leave, all that stuff, that.
Correct. I think, yeah, we would also secure, we'd negotiate on behalf of the community's minimum taxpayer agreement with the developer to make sure that there's, the public's not stuck with this bond as well. So that's a tool that we use so that that guaranteed tax revenue, if it falls short of that infrastructure cost, the safety mechanism, mechanism is in place that the developer is backing that financing and paying for it and not the community. So they're, we're going to try to negotiate as we work with the companies or any development in that site, that any infrastructure that gets extended upon agreement of commitment, that it's not going to fall back on at least the municipality on, on the bond side of things.
When you say developer, you're speaking of that one particular building, right? You know, I mean, I, if I'm wanting to build that building, I'm going to say, well, wait, why am I signing for this whole deal here?
Yeah, so they'll.
There's more than one project already in this area.
There is.
Yeah, so, yeah, we would look at, we would now analyze the, the tax, the new tax rate or the new tax amount for that TIF and that would be the bonded amount. So we basically tell the developer, we would negotiate, economic development corporation would negotiate the fact that you're going to receive, you're going to be paying three million dollars in, in taxes over the next thirty years. And so what we're going to do is we're going to generate a bond worth three million dollars and it's going to pay for that infrastructure from the city to get extended out there. And by the way, if you're, if, if you can't pay your taxes or, or the tax evaluation doesn't meet that threshold for the bond, that they would be obligated to pay that out of their own pocket, the owners of the land. So they're, they're taking the risk and it's not putting pipes in the ground or financing anything that they can't cover.
There's already one business out there that wants to be on it, that's Anderson.
They, yes.
Anderson's always been good to the community.
And we're, we're working with our corporate leadership too, so they've been instrumental in, in these discussions and providing valuable feedback.
Now, would that bond issue be kind of same for them, they, we put it in and?
If, if, yeah, I mean, if, I don't, the, the problem is it's not new construction, so for them, it wouldn't be an excess we could borrow in new tax revenue. So they're, so they're, whatever they pay in taxes comes to the coffers already via the rate. So I think this wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to borrow anything or we wouldn't be able to negotiate that, no.
Unless they expand.
Unless there was an expansion, correct, new construction.
Unless they expand, unless if they were to expand their footprint and the building and the process, then for that portion, yeah, that, that increase.
I've had my questions answered, any? Yeah, anybody out here have a comment? Yes.
Well, one thing I'm, I take on this is if the county's giving up the rights, turning it over to the city, then I know of at least one plan right now where the city is planning to come to, the county RDC wanting money and actually the numbers I've seen kicked around, the county RDC portion of would be greater than what the city would be paying, which is, there's also a third party in there that would be paying part of it. But if they're getting, I'm not sure the county RDC should be expected to pay quite as much because if they're expanding into that now, it's more city and so I just, that number I think needs to be taken into consideration.
But it's got to be taken into consideration by the redevelopment.
By the redevelopment.
By the whole process with this and, like I said, I know, I know, I've seen some preliminary numbers and.